Welcome everyone to tonight's special board meeting of the Evergreen School Board. For those of you that would like to join us, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands.
And as we get started with this meeting, I believe we have some scouts in the audience, is that right? So if so, if you could stand up and introduce yourself and tell us what school you're from and what badge you're working on. Welcome. Any other scouts?
One's standing.
Oh, okay.
Thank you Wyatt.
Yeah, any other scouts? Okay, well, thank you for coming and if you have any questions for us afterwards, you know, please, please come on by. So we'll get to our agenda and the first on the agenda is, I guess, adopting our agenda. So I'll entertain a motion.
A move that we adopt the agenda is presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda's been adopted. Next on the agenda are special recognitions and first we have energy incentive presentation. So I'll hand it over to John Stich.
And I'm going to hand it right over to Stu Steinbrenner, our facility director, who is taking a break from all the work she's been doing on the upcoming bond measure and is here tonight to introduce us.
So I'll ask Bill Hibbs from Clark PUD to come up. Bill is our key accounts manager and he runs all the commercial energy efficiency projects. He's got the big check to present to the board for the incentives.
Ow!
Just, a picture's worth a thousand words, so let me just show you. This is before and this is the after. This check represents about 12 parking lot lighting upgrades. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Jeff Taylor and Scott Brown from CES, the lighting supplier. Of course Mark Norrington and Marty back there in maintenance who, big idea, they implemented. Egg teamy here, but we basically replaced 400 watt metal halide lights with 45 to 100 watt LEDs, depending on if it was a single pole or double pole. That represents about 20,000 run hours on a metal halide versus 100,000 on a LED minimum guaranteed. So it's about five times more efficient. Is that Debbie? I also want to introduce Debbie Di Petri from Clark PUD.
Debbie.
Aye.
Debbie's the Energy Services Manager, so. Didn't mention, Bill's got a freshman at Union and a younger one at Illahi, so the run hour, so it's a lot more efficient for maintenance. We don't have to replace them as often, but also the metal halides have about a 30% lumens.
Other temperature probably has the, to be better.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll give you the big check. Most of the little checks are in cashed, so that's a.
(laughing).
That works.
No.
That works.
(laughing). John, he's always the first to grab the check.
Yeah, how do we do this?
There you go.
There you go.
(laughing).
Projects are really important to you.
Not your imagination, uh, there. You get better, um, so right here. So really, I'm not.
You have motion detectors in the light fixtures now?
Yeah, so they see that you come out. About 100% of it's seen.
Check it out when you go out tonight, because they do brighten up when you walk toward them.
Not just you?
No, it's not. Apparently not. Oh, it's happy to see me.
I really appreciate the work that you've done with the district in helping us save money, so it can go back into classrooms instead of just out into the energy universe. And it's that kind of work that's helped us become a sustaining energy star partner at the federal level for a number of years and the amount of money that we've saved has been pretty dramatic, so we appreciate that work, really.
I gotta throw a little bone to these guys, because they've, they've taken on the energy conservation and savings and have been really aware. They've both gone through the building operators program and I think Marty actually passed the test. So, yeah. Mark didn't take the test, or he would have passed it too. So, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda sounds intriguing. It says, "School Board Appreciation." So I'll turn this over to you, John.
And I'm trying to figure out what order we're doing this in. I'm looking at Dawn Nelson to see what the high sign is. Dawn first?
Dawn.
Okay. And while Dawn's bringing this, I just want to say a few words on behalf of the community. Having been a school board member at one time, I personally know the time, commitment, and passion behind serving on a school board. And the five of you, I mean Jenny, you've been here for a month, but what you're going to find out is it is extremely rewarding, but it is time consuming and it's a huge commitment. You have to dig into certain things. You're no longer free to go to the grocery store on your own terms. You often get confronted and you're going to hear many things that happen in the district. But I know that all five of these individuals have a huge heart for students and this last summer, we spent time developing new board policies to govern the district, including results policies. And they have a commitment to help make Evergreen School District the best district possible for the students and the community. And it's that commitment that's translated, has translated over the years into the outstanding programs that we have through tough times when making budget cuts, when nothing is popular, no teachers were reduced, the arts were protected, and that didn't happen in every district. So to show you the fruits of the work that you've done, what we wanted to do is to bring in an example of the outstanding arts programs that we have here in Evergreen and to have them perform for you as a way of saying thank you. Thank you very much. That was outstanding.
That was just beautiful and what a perfect song for us tonight. I mean, it, it sounds like how we feel about what goes on in our district and you guys have taken advantage of an awesome program and I'm so appreciative that so many of you are here and your sound is just spectacular, so thank you for being such awesome students.
Yeah, what a great message for you to share with us tonight and Victoria said it, I mean, it's what we're here for, is for all of you and we are one big district and we want the best for all of our students. I also want to commend you on your dedication for getting up at what time you'd be in class 705. Yeah, that's terrific. Great job.
Aye.
That was amazing, you guys. Thank you very much. That was beautiful.
The musicality, the diction, the breath control, the harmony, the unity. I sung in choir in high school, so. That is, that is real competition level performing and, and you gave me this emotional response. I really appreciate you coming in today and singing that. Thank you.
I actually have a sixth grader at Cascades, so it's nice to see schools that I'm actually been in and been around since I've been only on the board for a month, as John pointed out.
Yeah, thank you very much. I really enjoyed that. I, I really enjoy hearing performances by students in the district and this was absolutely no exception. I really enjoyed it and I congratulate you for participating in our arts programs and I love to hear that you're doubling down by doing this activity as well as others at Cascades, so I congratulate you. Thank you very much.
And I think we have one more thing. I guess I'd like one more round of applause for our Cascade Choir. And as you look around the boardroom, you see posters that were created by, I think, every school in the district expressing their appreciation for what the board does for students on an ongoing basis. We couldn't fit enough, as many students in here as we wanted to, to be able to present personally to you, but, and I'm looking for somebody in the back with a high sign, hopefully, that we had planned on having students from Hila High School here.
Oh, they, yes, there was a student here.
Oh, okay.
This is the one with the snowflakes?
I thought they were going to stay and say thank you.
Oh, well, they came over and talked to us, so that's okay.
Okay. So they were going to stay and, or say thank you very much personally, so we would have students not only performing, but also thanking you.
Well, I went around and was looking at the different posters. They are so clever and just so much imagination going into it. Really sweet. This one is so cute with all the different pictures. Really nice.
Very creative. I enjoy this every year when we get the chance to see all of the students' artwork and appreciation of us. Very appreciated. I'll have to get some pictures after.
Yeah.
I went around and took pictures of everything.
(laughing).
Well, maybe us with some of them. Like, I like it when they put our little faces on the posters.
I'm kind of partial to that big flower over there.
A picture with the flower.
That's nice.
Not the one with the candy?
We should get a picture of you with the drips.
I see, I see you guys, I see you guys took your candy off the board. I was wondering.
Candy off the board.
I'd better be over there when I come back.
It's on her, inspire our little faces on there. That's cute.
Say I love you Teresa's.
Very sweet. That's nice. We appreciate it a lot.
Any comments? I'm just a little overwhelmed, so I have to look at it all when we're done with the ceremonial parts.
If you say enjoy it, this is probably the most gratitude you're going to get between now and graduation.
That's right. Yeah, it is overwhelming though.
Not unless you go to a kindergarten class.
Okay.
Then it's fun. It's very gratitude.
Yeah, it is overwhelming, so we really appreciate the recognition and the gratitude. Yeah, we really, we feel, we feel like we're appreciated, so thanks, John.
And I think just in closing, I would point out that I've had the opportunity to be on and work with a whole lot of different boards, because every time you get a new member, you become a new board. And as boards go, you may not always agree, but you know how to disagree with each other and disagree with me and disagree with appropriately and work through issues. And above all, I think we have five board members that have kids first in their minds and their hearts, and that's what makes a positive difference in the district, so thank you.
So now we'll go on to our next agenda item and this is actually really exciting. For those of you who have followed our work on, as a school board and superintendent team, you know we are embarking on a real focus on results and accountability and this next section is our focus on student results and it's our first results policy that has made it to a first reading. And so, members of the board have received the reasonable interpretation indicators for the results policy number four, which has to do with citizenship, and we've received feedback also from the community, right, from honored citizens as well as certificated staff, among others, so I'll be looking forward to this discussion about this policy. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Stich to talk about this interpretation and indicators. John?
Okay, and just to kind of put this into perspective, the board approved a overall results policy that had four components. The first component was a mega result, sort of a vision statement on what you want our graduates to be able to do and accomplish following their K-12 experience. And then there's three specific areas of accountability for the administration and the school district on what you expect us to provide and achieve with our students. That first area was academic achievement. The secondary is dealing, secondary is dealing with social emotional learning and the final area is dealing with citizenship. So we've approached these in reverse order and we started with citizenship and your charge to us was to figure out what type of measures we could put in place for the different components of citizenship that you expect our graduates to possess. So we spent some time discussing, looking at what data we have currently available, what data we would be able to potentially create. And this interaction, in this first reading, is the administration presenting to the board the specifics that we're willing to be held accountable to in the future years for how we will measure citizenship in our graduates and in our students. So, and I'm going to, typically on a first reading, I go through these in detail for the community and the public, which then gives you an opportunity to be able to give us feedback over the next couple of weeks before we bring it back in second reading. So bear with me while I go through this. It's not just for you here in the audience. We also record these and post these on the website, so it's for the general community to be able to, to understand what's in those policies and be able to provide us feedback. So the overall results section says under citizenship, that students will understand, model, and advance the interconnectedness of individuals, cultures, communities, and their environment. And there was a lot of discussion by the board about it being their environment. It's broken into several subsections. The first subsection says, "Students will know and practice the duties, responsibilities, and rights of citizenship in a democratic society." And for indicators on this, we felt that to be compliant, we should show that all students adhere to the school routines and expectations for behavior, as outlined in the district student handbook, that students understand their role in a democratic process and actively participate age appropriately. Each secondary school shall have a functioning student-led associated student body government organization. All students understand and demonstrate the importance of understanding and contributing to their surrounding community. And graduating students complete an interest-based community exploration project. And finally, that students are able to successfully transition to post-high school life. Some of the measurements we're looking at is that we're able to extract data from student report cards at the elementary level and be able to pull that up to the district level, so there are behavioral components that are incorporated in our current elementary report card. And we're looking at the areas where are students able to consistently accept and follow school routines and expectations? Are students able to consistently take responsibility for their choices and actions? And then also looking at our student discipline data in our SWISS system, Schoolwide Information System, which records all major discipline incidents, and we'll be tracking that over time. That applies to following societal rules. Under democratic participation, we're going to be looking at our associated student body and we want, we're going to track the percentage of students participating and voting in their student body elections, as well as the percentage of filled positions within each student government at each school. We'll also look at, and we're still a little questionable on how we'll be able to get this data, but graduate voter registration rate for all eligible voters, because we don't exactly know which students would and would not be eligible to register for vote, to vote. But we'd like to be able to try to track our voter registration of our graduating seniors and see what kind of percentages we can get, so that we know that they're prepared to be able to participate following graduation. And then also, more of a process related, but outlining and presenting to the board what government-focused learning and coursework and curriculum that we have in the district. We realize that for the results, we're really looking at outcomes, but with some of these softer areas that aren't the hard academics with civics and social emotional learning, we've searched out other districts and tried to find indicators from other districts, but there's not many school districts out there that are measuring and holding themselves accountable in these areas. So initially, we're looking at actually having some process in presenting that to the board, saying, "This is what we've done to prepare them," but it's not necessarily, we're trying to come up with outcomes and that will may evolve over time. And for community participation, the percentage of students selecting a projects-based learning, community exploration, or internship that interacted outside of the school environment. And then for successful transition with students, looking at the percentage of students in post-secondary education and/or career following graduation, and we are going to start participating in a graduate tracking system that'll be able to provide us data on our graduates into the future. 4.2, the students will demonstrate cultural competency. We broke that down into three primary areas. One is cultural understanding and that one again is more process-related, identifying coursework components and specific classes aligned with the teaching of cultural understanding and reporting the percentage of students who have completed that coursework. Culturally compassionate behavior is the second category. We will be, last year, we adopted the Panorama Social Emotional Survey and we've gone through and identified a number of specific questions within the different Panorama student surveys that we'll be administering and holding ourselves accountable. Some of those questions are, "How often are, how often are people disrespectful to others at your school? How much respect do students in your school show to you? How carefully do you listen to others' people points of view? How much do you care about other people's feelings? How well do you get along with students who are different than you? When others disagree with you, how respectful are you of their views? How often do you allow others to speak without interruption? And to what extent are you able to disagree with others without starting an argument?" And then again, pulling off of elementary report cards, students who consistently respect individual differences and the rights of others, so teacher feedback on how they feel their students are doing in that area. And again, looking at our harassment, intimidation, and bullying complaint forms that are filed each school year and tracking those over time. We also looked at culturally relevant instruction and this again is going to be all process-related on what are we doing as a system to ensure that we're at least putting, giving, giving kids these experiences, not necessarily measuring the outcomes, but looking at percentage of students participating in a variety of inclusive classrooms, percentage of students participating in community circle structures, materials and program review outcomes for recent adoptions, so looking at what are, how culturally relevant and inclusive are our curricular materials. Community and culture-building strategies operating in our schools and the percentages of teachers trained in culturally, culturally relevant teaching practices are the indicators that we're going to be reporting back to the board on this. For 4.3, the expectation is students will be respectful and compassionate. We looked at two primary areas. One is the school environment and. One is the school environment, and again, looking at the Panorama survey, we have a series of questions at your school. How much does the behavior or other students hurt or help your learning? How often are people disrespectful to others at your school? How much respect do students in your school show you? How much do you matter to others at this school? So, some of the questions that we would get at for the students. And then under student behavior, looking at, again, our harassment, intimidation, and bullying reports, our school-wide discipline data, numbers of students involved in service work with our food pantries, share, kids give back, et cetera, different examples given on that. And then again, results on Panorama survey of how carefully do you listen to others' points of view? Some of the same questions fall into this one. And then looking at elementary report cards with students who consistently cooperate with others, students who consistently demonstrate concern for others, and students who consistently show respect for the ideas of others. And then, two more areas left. Section 5.4, students will understand how to appropriately advocate for change, and that was where the policy was recommended to be changed by some of our community feedback, adding the word "appropriately." We're looking at compliance areas being students completing a course of study on persuasive advocacy writing in elementary and middle school, students complete a course of study on contemporary world issues, and students developing and maintaining interest-based learning pathways. And so, in addition to those coursework, we also do have one of the Panorama survey questions, "To what extent were you able to stand up for yourself without putting others down?" Will be an indicator. And the final section in our results policy on citizenship, students will be good stewards of their environment. So, we're looking at the physical interconnectedness that students understand. And so, students are taught the reasons to recycle, and recycling efforts are understood at every school. And we're looking at trying to develop measures of recycling and energy conservation, looking at measures of discipline, or yeah, measures of discipline for defacing or damaging school property, and coming up with a standard of schools and their grounds are clean, litter-free, and graffiti-free. And finally, the percentage of elementary students consistently respect school environment and materials on their report card. From a global exposure, we're trying to tease out with that being good stewards of their environment, how do we connect or identify areas in our social studies curriculum where we're connecting students to their connections globally. So, that's what we've come up with. We understand that these are going to need a little bit of refining. The goal would be to start collecting data now, so that next year, we can report out and provide baseline data. And from that baseline data, with Panorama, we actually do have national norms on those, so we can give you comparisons to where we fall with other schools nationally. With the report card data, it's going to be Evergreen report card data, as well as some of these other measures. So, a year from now, we'll be having a discussion with you on, is this the baseline to start from and improve from, and how much improvement do you want from this baseline? So, now that I've outlined all of the indicators we're willing to be held accountable for in, or results policy for, at this time, I recommend that the board accepts the reasonable interpretation and indicators for the board's results policy, R4 Citizenship, as presented for first reading, and move it forward for second reading and final approval.
Thanks, John. At this time, I'd like to call upon the audience to see if there's anyone in the audience that has a question or comment about this policy. See anyone? Okay?
Is there a question or not?
If you do have a question or a comment, please come to the podium and state your name and address. What?
No, I wasn't. I was thinking of the young man who's sitting right behind Margaret, but if he doesn't have one, that's okay too. I just... It just looked like he might have had a question. It's okay. All right, I don't see any others.
Thank you. We're not intimidating if you do have a question.
We like questions.
Yeah, we do like questions.
It's okay.
Okay. Okay. So, I'll call for a motion now.
I recommend the board, or I move that the board accept the reasonable interpretation and indicators for the board's results policy, R4 Citizenship, as presented for first reading and move it forward for second reading and approval or adoption.
They're second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. At this time, I'd like to open up to the board for comments and questions. What do you have?
I just have one comment. I think, John, you did a really nice job of putting the evidence pieces together, because I think for such a vague, you know, kind of citizenship and it being kind of such a global topic, it was really hard to come up with accountability and evidence measures, and I think you did a really nice job of that. And I also think that as we've had these discussions over the past, well, since last summer, about citizenship and what it means for an Evergreen student, I think more about like the conversations that we've had with people in our community, our state representatives, our local businesses, about the type of student and the kind of person that they want to join our workforce, which makes me believe even more that this is such an important policy for us.
Lee, a lot of people think we aren't concerned about that part of a student's educational experience here, but it's just more and more important all the time, and I'm really happy with what you've come up with. I think that plan of attack on this very much meets with our, you know, original policy and what we wanted to see. It feels like a good fit. I know it will be evolving over time, but it's a good place to start, and I think it's really important that our students and our community know that citizenship is a really important thing for all of us to understand and participate. So, thanks for that.
Well, like the other policies, this is thorough and well-defined and clear, and I appreciate that part of it. It got me thinking about something I just learned today, it was called Pearson's Law. It goes, when performance is measured, performance improves. When it's measured and reported back, the rate of improvement accelerates. I don't know how widespread that idea is, but it goes back for decades. And it just occurred to me that this is what we're doing, is we're trying to assign measurements to things that used to be so nebulous. You got a citizenship grade in elementary school, and then you enter junior high or middle school, and it's just kind of like, okay, now you know how to be a citizen. Go be a citizen or be punished. And this is going to create a different kind of culture around those subjects, I think, to be able to say, "This is what the culture at this school is like in these terms." So, I'm looking forward to the results and to see whether and how fast they improve.
One comment I had, or a question, I guess, in that first subsection where we're talking about functioning in a democratic society, I really like one of the indicators we have, which is like the percentage of project-based learning, since we're focusing in on, you know, working on projects. So, I assume when you talk about that for community exploration, the kids have, I guess, the freedom to pick whatever project that interests them, right?
Yes.
Do you have examples of things that might be appropriate?
I guess it runs the gamut.
Yeah. You know, as we start to look at, you know, Orchard's Elementary last year did an environmental project looking at invasive species and nutria in the Ridgefield Wildlife Preserve. So, that would be an example of connecting to the local community with an issue of concern in our local community.
Hey, thanks.
You know, and a lot of this is, as the different teachers are looking for authentic audiences, how are we getting our kids connected to our local community in a way that they understand that they can impact change here locally?
Okay. Thanks, John. Any other comments, questions?
I'd just point out that this was a team effort on putting this together. We've been meeting for many times with a lot of good heads involved in this, and as we've talked about the overall accountability system, one of the things that we've said, that we foresee this being a huge benefit, is we're actually starting to describe things that teachers spend a lot of effort working on, that have never truly been acknowledged as something that we are focused on. So, with the social emotional work and the civics and citizenship, to be actual, to act, for the board to actually say, "This is what we want our students to do," allows us to be able to say, "This is worth setting aside, time aside for, for specific learning to better prepare our kids to be functional citizens in our society."
And the feedback we're getting from the public too is they really want our graduates to come out of, you know, our school system as good citizens, right? And a lot of feedback on what that takes and even... Okay. So, it's been moved and seconded to accept the reasonable interpretation and indicators as a first reading for R4 Citizenship. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the first reading of the reasonable interpretation and indicators of R4 Citizenship has passed, and so we'll bring it forward to our, at our next board meeting for a second reading and approval. So, thanks, John. And next is the section on monitoring district operations, and the first one we have here is the board has received the monitoring report for OE5, which is financial planning, and we're bringing this forward for a second reading. And so, for this, I guess I throw the meeting over to Mike Merlino for a presentation, and as he comes up to the podium, I'd like to remind people that Mike was featured in a video on The Columbian today, along with Victoria Bradford and John Stich, so job well done.
Actually, I've tried to incorporate that into the presentation now, so if we could get the lights. Oh, just kidding, of course. Two weeks ago, I came and presented in depth the actual reports tied to OE5, as far as reporting financial, deciphering the financial reports to the board. And we made that presentation. I haven't heard any, there have been no calls or questions asked in the meantime, so I'm not really, I don't have anything to add to what we had done two weeks ago. So, what I would be doing is I recommend that the board accepts the monitoring reports for OE5, financial planning as presented for second reading as evidence of compliance with the noted exceptions.
Hey, thanks, Mike. I call to the audience if you have any questions or comments. Okay. If none, I guess I'll call for a motion from the board.
I move the board accepts the monitoring reports for operational expectation OE5 financial planning as presented for second reading as evidence of compliance with noted exceptions.
Seconded? Okay. It's been moved and seconded. At this time, I'll open up to the board for comments or questions.
Got all mine answered last, at the last board meeting. Happy we're moving forward with it, and it's, again, it's accountability to the financial status and health of the district, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, and it's an extensive monitoring report, so we really appreciate it. So, okay, I guess now we will take a vote to accept the monitoring report for OE5, financial planning, as an indication of compliance for this policy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the monitoring report has passed. Thank you, Mike. Oh. With noted exceptions. We didn't have any exceptions though, right?
There were three exceptions that we noted that were implementation issues.
That's right. Okay.
The four-year budget projection, the state hasn't defined that yet. The board staff development calendar was in draft form when we presented it last summer, and you're going to make me look it up, aren't you, what the third one was? Five. I'd have to pull it up, and I just looked at it a second ago, too. They're highlighted in yellow on the attachment. Oh, yeah. Oh, the assumptions. Because you expect us to provide you all the assumptions on the budget document, and because we didn't document everything during the development, we gave you an idea of what we document this next year as we develop it.
Okay.
Because the requirement wasn't there while we were developing the budget.
That's right. Okay. Yeah, so we voted to approve the monitoring report for OE5, and we have noted the exceptions. Next on the agenda is Operation Expectation 7, Asset Protection, and this is a second reading, and the board has received the reasonable interpretation indicators for OE7. I guess I'll throw it over to you, John.
Similar to what Mike said, we presented this in detail two weeks ago and have received no input from the public, from administration of the board. So, at this time, I ask the board accepts the reasonable interpretation and indicators for operational expectation OE7, Asset Preservation, as presented for second reading and approval.
Any comments or questions from the audience? If seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
I move that the board accept the superintendent's reasonable interpretation and indicator operational expectation OE7, Asset Protection, as presented for second reading and approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from the board?
And this is very similar to our financial, that, you know, the accountability is in place, and we have the indicators of evidence that we're asking for, so...
Okay, so we will now take a vote to approve OE7, the reasonable interpretation and indicators as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the second reading of the reasonable interpretation indicators has passed for OE7. Thank you very much. Add?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thanks. And then, next, we have Operational Expectations OE12, Facilities, and this is a first reading, and the board has received the reasonable interpretation and indicators for this, and I'd like to turn it over to you, John.
Great. And just for the audience, I'm not going to go through all of the detail or all of the background, other than the difference between our results policies, which focus on student outcomes. The Operations Expectations are the boundaries that the board provides to me on the operation of the district. So, there's a series of statements of either the superintendent shall always do this, the superintendent shall never do this, or the board deserves the right to do this. And they've put these statements in here, and then this is my interpretation on how I'm going to prove back to the board that I'm in compliance with their expectations on how the district's operated as superintendent. So, the overall facility policy states that the superintendent shall assure that the physical facilities support the accomplishment of the board's results policies. So, it's an acknowledgement that everything we do should be centered on student learning. OE12 has several sections. Section 12.1 is that the superintendent will develop and execute a facility plan that establishes priorities for construction, renovation, and maintenance projects that, and I have items A, B, C through E, A aligns highest priority to deficiencies that risk-causing serious facility deterioration or personal health concerns unless corrected, B includes maintenance costs as necessary to enable facilities to reach their intended life cycles, C plans for and schedules preventive maintenance, D plans for and schedules system replacement on new, when new schools open, schools are renovated or systems are replaced, and E discloses assumptions on which the plan is based, including growth patterns and the financial and human impact individual projects will have on other parts of the organization. So, the district has and will continue to create an annual district facility master plan that we will present to the board that will reasonably address the board's expectations in this area, and with any luck, we will be very active in this area over the next few years. So, 12.2, superintendent will project total cost of ownership as capital decisions are made. So, the board shall, my commitment is to provide the board a current facility capital, current capital facility plan report, which documents current facility conditions as well as future projected facility needs, accompanied by anticipated costs. Additionally, over the past year, any additional operating costs have been estimated and documented for any new facility recommended, facilities recommended for purchase, construction, or lease. So, if we're going to make any changes, I need to do an analysis of not just the facility cost, but the operating cost, including personnel costs going into the future, and provide that to the board. Superintendent will assure that facilities are safe, clean, and properly maintained. For compliance, I will provide the board a summary of all facility hazard testing plans, completed testing, and corrective... completed testing, and corrective actions taken over the past year. This is the wording I added since the workshop, when it was brought up. We recently did a bunch of lead and radon testing, and where was that covered in my interpretation? So, you pointed out that our interpretation didn't catch everything that you expected, and this is the language that I brought back to you. If you look up above, it says, "We know we will be compliant when the district has completed testing for potential inherent facility hazards such as lead, radon, asbestos, and taken appropriate corrective actions based on testing results." I'm seeing heads nod, sounds like I hit the mark on what you expected there. 12.4 is the superintendent will consistently administer facilities' use guidelines delineating permitted use, the applicable fee structure, clear user expectations, including behavior cleanup, security, insurance, and damage repair, and consequences and enforcement procedures for public users who fail to follow the established rules. So what we will bring to the board annually, the applicable policies and procedures governing community use of district facilities will be presented. Also, the fee schedule from the previous year, along with comparisons with other local districts, and a basis for any change to the previous year's rates, and the revenue expenditure summary for the year on our facility rentals. Also, the current facility use, application, and expectations documents, as well as a summary of the communication methodology. So what we have for expectations for facility users, and how we communicate that to them. And then finally, a summary of all facility damage by community users over the past year, as well as a resolution summary for each event to show cost recovery and any other 12.5, the superintendent may not build, lease, or renovate buildings. As I was looking over some recommended policy changes that we're working on as an administrative team with the policies you remanded to me, something came to my attention this week that we've, I would recommend the board would wanna consider, they forgot something in this policy and would wanna make a change, unless you wanna delegate to me the naming of school facilities, which I really doubt you wanna do. I'm seeing the, so I already have a draft of how we can modify this policy to where it would basically say the superintendent may not build, lease, renovate, or name buildings. So if you're amenable to that, I will bring that as a first read to the next meeting. And I've already got the indicators, I've worked it into the indicator. So for the expectation, in the absence of the board evidence where I've done that, when you've told me I'm not supposed to, the superintendent will provide a document listing all contracts to build, lease, or renovate buildings, which includes the resolution number or board agenda items where it was approved by the board. So, so you have an opportunity to tell me if I broke the rules and I did what you told me I wasn't supposed to do, and I will also provide you a report showing you where you've done all of those actions over the previous year. 12.6, the superintendent may not recommend land acquisition without first determining growth patterns, comparative costs, construction and transportation factors, and any extraordinary contingency costs due to the potential natural or man-made risks. So, and again, in addition to the absence of any board evidence where the superintendent has recommended land acquisitions without presenting proper justification to the board prior to approval, the superintendent will provide resolutions for all property purchases over the past year with an understanding that board approval signifies that adequate information was collected and shared to result in the purchase. So the assumption is, if you're gonna agree to the purchase, don't agree to it unless you feel I've given you everything that you would need under this policy. OE, or 12.7, the superintendent may not authorize construction schedules or changes, or change orders that significantly increase cost or reduce quality. And again, this one would say, in addition to the absence of any board evidence where the superintendent has approved, construction changes without board approval, the superintendent will provide a document listing all changes to the initially approved budget scope and schedule of all construction projects, which includes the resolution number or board agenda items where it was approved by the board. This is one where we had a lot of discussion, and this is our interpretation for the way it sits right now. Depending what happens on February 13th, I think we need to have a discussion and maybe put a dollar value on this, so that it gives me clear guidance on what I am authorized to approve and what you want me to bring. Because the word significantly increases cost or reduces quality, I think we need to firm that up, and Sue and I have had discussions on that. So, when we get past February 13th, and between February 13th of this year and probably March of next year, we'll need to have a discussion and figure out what that threshold is. So that's what we have in the way of facilities, on what the board expects of me for how this district functions, and how I'm going to provide evidence back to the board, to hopefully prove that we have operated the district within their expectations. So at this time, I recommend the board accepts the reasonable interpretation and indicators for operational expectations OE12 facilities as presented for first reading and move it forward to second reading and approval, with the understanding that you probably wanna hold on to naming of facilities, and I'll change that before second reading.
Okay. Yeah, thanks John.
You're welcome.
At this point, any comments or questions from the audience? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the board for a motion.
I recommend the board accepts the reasonable interpretation and indicators for operational expectation OE212 facilities as presented for first reading and move it forward for a second reading and approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from the board?
Do wanna, if I can articulate this right. So, you wanna ask us to revise OE12 and insert naming in the buildings?
Correct.
We need to bring that changed into a first reading next time?
Yes.
And then a second reading independently of this, or?
Right, has to be independent of this.
Right.
But what I would do is, I'll include it in this, even though it's not formally in there.
I wondered if you could interpret renovate as including naming for the purpose of this, and then we can go ahead and put that in the policy for a second reading, and so forth as we need to. Then you wouldn't have to go back and change that document.
I think they're separate, I think renovate is, naming is naming.
Okay.
We've done it before, we've had to do that before on some of the other policies, we've had a separate vote.
Okay, sort of in parallel then, right?
Yeah, they're kind of parallel, one's just a board meeting behind the other one.
Okay.
So are we gonna lay this on the table until next time for a first reading approval?
I'll put the new language in parentheses, so that it won't be official until you approve the policy, and then by the time we get around to monitoring, we'll just remove the parentheses.
Um, thank you.
Kind of what I did with appropriately advocate in the results policy.
Right, right. Okay, yeah, I like that as an approach. And I appreciate you inserting the specific substances, lead, radon, and so forth, that have been something we've had to face in the past. I think that'll be cool for communicating about this. Thank you for that.
Then we'll be able to show our testing schedule and our results.
Mm-hmm.
They'll all be done.
That's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments or questions? So we'll now take a vote to accept the reasonable interpretation and indicators for OE12, Facilities. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the first reading has been accepted, and we'll bring it forward for a second reading and approval at our next board meeting. Thank you, John. Next on the agenda is the board consent agenda, and for that, we have the minutes from our regular board meeting, which was on January 9th, and minutes from our workshop that we held last week on January 17th, which was a school improvement plan meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt the board consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the board consent agenda has been adopted. Next, we have the superintendent's consent agenda. Any comments or questions first?
I have a comment. Due to a remote interest in Microsoft stock, I must recuse myself from accounts payable warrant voucher 341002.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the superintendent consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the superintendent's consent agenda has been approved. Next is the good news report, and for that, I assume it's Gail Spoiler, is that right? Welcome, Gail.
So I know that we probably saw the first item on the good news report, but it's worth repeating, our community partner, DiscoverOrg, last year astonished us when they donated $40,000 and 3,000 pounds of supplies. Well, they doubled that this year, $80,000 in contributions and over 8,800 pounds of supplies that are going to our family and community resources. So, they are fabulous, fabulous partners, and bears repeating, even though I know that you saw a lot of this already over the holidays, but that is such a boost to our community, family and community resource centers. So, as you know, we have fabulous music programs in our schools, you saw that earlier. So, Mountain View High School's instrumental program was the 2017 recipient of the Program of Excellence Blue Ribbon Award from the National Band Association. This award is a national award with the purpose of recognizing schools that continually exhibit excellence in all aspects of music performance. Congratulations to a Union High School student, Amani Chapman, who's been selected as one of only two students in the state, to the United States Senate Youth Program to be held in Washington DC in March, and along with that comes a $10,000 college scholarship. Heritage High School had three classes enter the Global Idea Challenge sponsored by DECA. The challenge was to use rubber bands and create new products to reduce the rubber bands and landfills. And you can read about the specific projects, but two of them won grand prize awards, the Rubber Band Shoelace Project and the Water Filter Shoelace, or Water Filter Project. So again, some more descriptions in that as well. Sue just, and her group just left, but the facilities and maintenance crew did once again volunteer at share house. They painted restrooms, and helped serve dinner, and washed dishes. It's a community service project, second year in a row that they have done that. The kindergarten first and third grade buddies at York Elementary teamed up and hosted a canned food drive in December. Not only did they work together to advertise, organize, and collect, but they sorted 25 boxes of food for the pantry. You may have also seen the posts on our social media, but there's nothing, I wanna say cute, but they aren't cute. They're, they're, they're middle school athletes, but the Shaheila Middle School basketball players, as you can imagine what middle school basketball players look like.
They're cute.
They are cute, they're a little gangly and a little, but they did a techy boot camp for residents at Touchmark Fairway Village. So the students go in and they help the residents problem solve, troubleshoot any of their devices, and then they were invited to stay for lunch. Cute pictures if you haven't seen them on our Facebook page. Covington Middle School National Honor Society collected 615 pounds for fish of orchards. They've been doing that for the last eight years. Heritage High School's Future Business Leaders of America, FBLA, sponsored a drive to support an orphanage in a remote part of Kenya last month. They donated over 1,300 items to be sent to approximately 40 orphans. And part of that was actually, how do you get all of the stuff over to orphanage in Kenya? So that was part of their, their whole problem solving, as well as their collecting. And then Crystal Wolf, a teacher at Mountain View High School, presented her poster titled Zebra Fish in the high school environmental and biology classrooms at the annual Murdoch Partners in Science Conference in San Diego. Not only did she get to make the presentation, but she was also awarded a $7,000 supplemental grant for her classroom. She spent the last two summers in research for the Department of Integrative Bioscience at Oregon Health Sciences University. That's just a little sampling of the good news written in the district. Again, didn't get to read all of it, although, Mike, would you like me to? Okay, I'll leave it up and Mike will finish up. Thank you.
I have to say, I have a friend that, on Facebook, that is, lives at Touchmark, and she messaged me about the tech training, and I, I had noticed that her Facebook posts were much more exciting and colorful, and I think that she was tutored in that, and it was really cute.
Yeah, Julie and I were at Touchmark Fairway Village on Monday, and we heard great things about that visit from the Shaheila basketball team, and they were even hugging the residents, right?
They were, yes.
That was.
They, they mentioned they would like them to come back.
Like every week?
Every, yeah, every week.
Yeah, every week. Okay, thanks, Gail.
I'm curious about how the FBLA solved their logistics problem. How do you get a bunch of donations to Kenya?
No.
Yeah. That's a, that's a tall order, and to see a high school club taking that on, that's impressive.
I had enough trouble getting my daughter's belongings to the East Coast a year ago.
Yes.
Know what you mean. Yes.
So next, we have the budget update, and Chief Operating Officer, Mike Merlino, and as a reminder, this is the same Mike Merlino that was featured in a video in the Columbian today. Welcome again, Mike.
Yes, I do appreciate that. I wanna point out that also, one of our board members, Victoria Bradford, was there because I, unfortunately, our president couldn't make it.
You are correct.
Sorry.
And no, but we, I think we did a fine job, Victoria did a great job in your stead.
She did.
Sure she will continue to do. But thank you for pointing that out. It is on the, it's columbian.com. If, okay, budget report. So you have two documents that we share throughout the year, and as we've kinda talked this year, this, the first I'll talk about is the financial indicators, looking at enrollment and looking at staffing, which has been different this year compared to previous years, because we have seen a, kind of a, I don't know, just a strange year with respect to enrollment. And you're familiar with the fact that we contract, in the past, we've contracted with various demographers, we use Eric Hovey at the present time, and he met with us the other day as a, he's kinda revised the projections, and basically showed us several years' worth of enrollment, and this really is a significant anomaly in terms of what we've seen, probably at least the 10, last 10, 15 years. But what you have in front of you looks at what we had used for budget purposes, what the average is so far this year, and then what the estimate is for what our figures will be for elementary, middle, high school in particular, which are the three largest drivers of revenue in the district. And we talked about this right from the beginning, really, but you can see that where, early in the year, you're not really sure, okay, your trends, you look at past years, but we're not sure how this year's gonna go. You can see it, we really haven't seen any improvement as the year's gone on, and probably actually a little more of a decline in terms of what the estimate is. So overall, we're projecting to be about 400 kids below what we had budgeted. Typically, we're, we are under budget by, you know, we try to be 50 to 100, 150, so it's a pretty significant swing. In conversations with Mr. Hovey, one of the pieces of this was related in his mind to the OFM has changed their birth rates that they've used in terms of projections for future years. So one of the areas that we were down, over 100 kids, is in the kindergarten class coming in. So I think we just overestimated what the size of the incoming class would be. Other than that, we've also seen some, just really across the board, and what we've kind of anecdotally been able to determine is that it has to do with what we believe is cost of housing, some, in the population, the ELL population is down this year, where the last several years it's been, it's increased, and so we've seen a corresponding increase in what, in Battleground School District is basically where we're seeing it. So, we're looking at that, we've updated projections for next year, you know, 400 kids as a percentage, it's maybe about 1.6 or 7%, which doesn't seem like a huge number when you're talking about, we're off by about a point and a half. which doesn't seem like a huge number when you're talking about, we're off by about a point and a half in terms of percent. But that's almost the size of an elementary school when you think about that. So that's, it's significant. You, we really can't have consecutive years of that being a problem. So you see the numbers above that gives you the elementary, middle, high school. Our alternative FTE estimates have been pretty much on, on point. CTE, right now, we're right exactly where we expected to be. Special Ed, we're under enrollment, which is, in terms of the former cap on the amount of special ed enrollment the state had a cap of 12.7% in previous years. The fact that our enrollment has kind of not, is not growing is, is a good thing with respect to that, even, even though the legislature changed that to 13.5% with the budget last year. But still, being under budgeted in special ed isn't necessarily a bad thing. And then ELL, you can see the significant decrease, 166. And, and that's kind of where we've seen what we believe to be the, the largest. Well, that and the kindergarten being the largest impacts overall. Down below, you see then, we report, starting in the budget during the summer, as well as then monthly throughout the year, what it does, the number of students actually drive out in staffing. So you can see the difference in all three of those categories from the allocation in July during the budget to January, elementary, we're down about 13. That's, that's what the corresponding decrease of enrollment applies to. Overall, when you talk about a 400 student decline, that's probably between $2.5 and $3 million in a school district our size, so it's a pretty significant amount. You can also see when you look at the staffing, that we had budgeted for about 1,230, and right now, we're at about 1,220. Part of that was in the fall when we saw some areas where, where we had openings and didn't hire them because of the decline in enrollment. So that 10 or so FTE drop is probably about a million dollars' worth of savings in terms of what the FTE per, per staff member costs. So it's a kind of a combination. We're, we're doing our best to offset the decline overall. And then you can also see in special ed that, within the special ed program, our staffing is about what we had expected with, with respect to the allocation. So we, we've kind of, there's no question that as we build the staffing for next year, that we will again look at the estimates from our demographer and probably be even a little more conservative than what we might be, but we'll work through that process. We'll start that process after we get enrollment next week. So that's February. The second document looks at, actually, if you have questions about the first, or I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about that, or I'm happy, if you want to talk about my video some more, we could do that too.
I'll have to go and watch. I hear it's an hour long.
It's great, and John did really well.
That's good. Well, thank you for doing that. Or was I? You said the, the reduction in our enrollment is being seen elsewhere in the county, in Battleground. Do you have any sense about whether we're losing kids to not enrolling at all or not showing up to school at all?
Well, what, what we have seen kind of across the county in talking, for me talking to other districts, is that in Vancouver, they were down. They were, they expected to be down, they may be down a little bit more than they thought. There were Camus expected to not be. I think they thought they were going to have a little growth, and they're actually down a little bit. Battleground is actually where they've seen more growth. So the, the thought is that some of the, of our student, I, I think Evergreen has been hit harder than those other districts in terms of what the, the drop has been. We've also seen a corresponding drop in our free and reduced percentage. And we've seen ELL year-to-year drop where the last few years we've had increases. Now, anecdotally, we're hearing that there are people moving into Battleground. Now, that's from our ELL department. We also know that the housing costs are a little less in Battleground. And then when you look at their actual enrollment, they actually have increased in enrollment there, and their ELL population year-to-year has grown greater than what you would typically see at Battleground. So that's, that's one theory in terms of, of why we're seeing the, the decrease in enrollment. A large, I'd say more than 25% of that is related to our kindergarten class being smaller than what we had expected. But then the rest, it's kind of across the board, but really more in the elementary. And our highest numbers of ELL population are actually in the elementary schools as well.
And I just want to make sure I heard correctly. Then you articulated shortfall due to the enrollment being down versus what we budgeted. So it sounds like you're making all the adjustments for this year's budget.
Yeah.
And then trying to be even more conservative on enrollment for next year.
Correct. So, so the second document you have kind of looks at what is the estimate for the current year that we're in? Kind of what was the budget? Where are we at as of the most recent month? So you can see December 31, 2017 in the middle, and then the estimated final. Even with the drop in enrollment, we're still not expecting to see a drop in our fund balance. So we do have the fact that we've, we've dealt with as much as we could in terms of not replacing positions when the numbers didn't support them, when there were openings. There were at least, I don't know, four or five in the elementary, and then there have been some in the secondary. So that offsets it a little bit as well. But one of the things that also kind of happened to us late in the game was the state's, in the state's funding changes, one of the things that they did, they've got K3 class size language in, in, not class size. They have K3 funding formulas. And for the, the current year, they suspended the rules around them because it was so late. They drove the, the class sizes down to 17 to 1. But as we're all very aware of here anyway, the legislature didn't complete their work until middle of July, almost the end of July, really, before we had the ability, which is well beyond the time to find people and have them ready. So there was some new money in K3 that really wasn't anticipated, that as of right now is one-time money, that we would look at as helped us offset this issue as well. So in the current year, I don't, I don't, we don't see a drop in, in fund balance. We probably, would have been nice to have been able to bank a little bit as we move into the next few years. It's going to be more problematic for us to do that. But while 1718 is not an ideal year, it's not, it's not going to be kind of, any kind of a, a significant drag on the district. But we will have to make adjustments as we build the budget for next year to recognize the, the swing in enrollment. And, and we've done that. I mean, we've done that. We do, we always react to things like this.
Questions for Mike?
Okay, thanks.
We have next, and an update?
So kind of a segue off our facilities report. I was notified by OSPI this week that OSPI is going to work with the local health departments to implement lead testing and pay for lead testing at all schools. So my question back, which I don't have an answer to yet, is will they just reimburse us for all the testing we did last year? Because they're not going to test anything we didn't already test. So we're hoping to be able to just provide them our sample results and our sample plan and be able to get reimbursed for that, which would be very nice. Also, you'll notice that Chris and Derek aren't here tonight. They are at the Future of Education Technology Conference presenting the work that we did in our LIFT initiative with our personalized learning and one-by-one. So other districts can learn from what we've done. In addition to that, I just found out today that the presentation is similar to what we did at WASDA. There is a WASDA, AWSP WASDA Equity Conference in May, and we will be presenting there in May. Also, in May, at the Association for Computer Professionals in Education in the state of Oregon over up in the mountain in Welch's, we're going to be doing a panel discussion with Derek, Chris, and I, talking about our, again, the LIFT initiative. And then also, in July, we've now been asked to speak at a Social Emotional Learning Conference in Chicago with the work that we're doing with Carl Smith is leading with our mindfulness work and our following, following up on our equity work. So the board had told me earlier in the year that one of the things they wanted Evergreen to do is with the progress we've been making in these areas, get out and share the successes with others. So I'm hoping you see that we're in the process of doing this, and we are tracking these, and we'll be sharing these with you as evidence of compliance with our communication policy next year. Also, from a legislative standpoint, you know, there's several bills out there dealing with fixes to 2242. In our eyes, the Reichdahl bill is probably the closest to what the end result is going to be, is what we've kind of heard. But there are four bills, and they're looking at comparisons and picking and choosing. And we're continuing to provide input through our lobbyists and also coordinating with Vancouver and the ESD to try to influence the legislature as best as possible for what's in the best interest of our kids. In a way of another segue, I was just privileged to be able to be with Mike Merlino with the editorial board this week. Been doing that as well as many other PTA, PTO presentations, along with much of our cabinet has been out in the community, sharing as much information as possible. We really believe that, right, just by providing the information and what this community would receive with a minimal bump in the bond rate, but an overall tax decrease by 2019 is a pretty good deal for the community. I also try to point out that while our video and everything says that there will be a bump in the bond rate, I've been, only been with the district three and a half years, and when I joined the district, our bond rate was $1.84 per thousand. And if this were to pass, it would bump us back up to $1.77. So our rate would still be less than it was three years ago with the passage of the bond. So I encourage everybody to get out and make sure you vote and get your ballots in by February 13th. And the last thing I have to share is an award that we received, the Gold Star Award for our college-bound scholarship signups at the middle school. That we as a district have attained Gold Star status, and our middle schools are being recognized. I have certificates that I'll be getting out to the middle school, commending them on the work that they're doing, getting our students in poverty with the right GPA signed up to where they could potentially be able to go to college tuition-free and getting that word out there and being proactive. So I think I really commend our middle school principals, staff, and getting, working with our kids to get them signed up. And that's what I have.
Great. Thanks a lot, John. And next on our agenda are board comments. Do we have any comments from the board?
I, I do. I had the privilege of being at the editorial board with Mike and John. Sitting between the two of them was quite, you know, a flattering experience. But I, I was really happy that the Columbian asked us to come and talk about the bond, and they had some good questions, and, and I'm hoping that the information gets out there and that people really listen to what information had to give them. So that was...
Thanks for doing that. You did a great job. Watched the whole thing. Any other comments?
Well, I, I know I wasn't with Mike Merlino at the Columbian, getting myself on camera like that, but I ended up on camera anyway in the last couple of weeks, invited as part of WASDA's delegation to talk about one of the bills. And I ended up giving testimony in Olympia before a committee for the first time in my life, which was interesting in its own right. Got a chance to notice, the bill in question that WASDA had me testify on, I think it aligns with our position about the graduation requirement of passing a high-stakes test on a single day. And the bill was one that Representative Stonier put in to remove that requirement from graduation without removing the requirement to test them. So the assessments would still be in place and the, but the linkage to a graduation and a diploma would not under that. And there seems to be some traction, so that's with that idea this year. So there's some top-of-mind push for that. And I got a lot of good help from our friend Melissa, our lobbyist up there. So as you're watching over the bills.
For WASDA with your testimony.
Was I? I haven't seen the newsletter.
Well, the update, the weekly update.
Oh, the Friday update?
Yeah, testified, and I think there was a link to you.
Oh. Wow.
I'll watch it.
Wow.
So write ahead if you like. I tried to speak as, as fashionably as I could about it without going overboard. But the truth is, is that our delegation from southwest Washington is kind of top-heavy. They're leading the education committee this year. Paul Harris is the minority ranking member, and Monica Stonier is the vice chair of the committee. I think that's the, that's the title, and she assists Representative Ortiz, I think that's her name, on, on that committee there. And she spoke so powerfully about the efficacy, or the non-efficacy of these tests with respect to whether or not that means something to an employer for a graduate. There wasn't a lot to add, but I added it anyway. And I hope it becomes effective so that our kids don't have that pressure. Aside from that, I'll be going up to Olympia this weekend as part of the advocacy conference and Day on the Hill. Representative Wright?
Yeah, thanks, Rob. You were there, you were in Olympia twice last week, and yeah, going up again this week, right? So...
Yeah, I was in Olympia the second time last week for a completely different reason.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
I just wanted to kind of touch on our first school improvement plan meeting that we had. I know John tweeted out about, about the collaboration. We met with our North End schools last week, and we really were impressed with how well they're all collaborating and working with each other, trying to make that whole K through 12 experience for our students. Kind of like the song we heard earlier, "We Are One," right? We are one district, and it's, it's really lifting to see the work that all of our schools are doing together to make sure that our students have the best experience.
Yeah, that was my first one, and it was baring. And to sit back and listen to all of the great things that are going on in each individual school is, see what the principals are doing and their staff, and like you said, the collaboration. And I'm impartial to that area, so.
Yeah, so much thanks to John and the staff and all the building principals that presented, right? We got a really good idea of what's going on in, in the school, so that was really good. Any other comments? Maybe just, a lot of people are working very hard to get the word out on, on the bond. And yeah, I had a good time with Julie on Monday at Touchmark Fairway Village, talking about the bond. I thought we had really good response there. You know, talked to other concerts and things. And also in terms of the arts program, I got the opportunity to see 1776 last week at Heritage, which was the musical, and the kids did a great job. So that was a lot of fun. Next on our agenda are future agenda items. Do we have any to bring up? And, okay, so at this time, we will be going into recess, and after recess, and we'll be signing papers. After recess, we'll have a board workshop in the large green conference room to talk about operational expectations OE10 on learning environment. We'll be talking about Board Results Policy III, which is on social and emotional development. We'll have a board meeting debrief, we'll have a legislative update, and a superintendent's update. So we are in recess. Thank you.